Welcome, everybody, here today. We're gonna get started. The first thing we're gonna have this evening is the prayer. Henry, would you lead some prayer?
I just pray. Father Lord, we thank you for blessing us, Lord, to see another day, to be able to come out and conduct business of the county. Father, we just thank you for your gracious mercy in blessing this nation, Lord, our state, and our county. Father, we ask that your wisdom and guidance will be with us as we conduct the business of the county tonight. Bless all that are here, and, Lord, bless the deliberations we make will be a blessing to all. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the business with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome again, everybody. First thing on our agenda is gonna be the approval of the agenda. We've got a couple of changes tonight, gentlemen. Just some documents that Morgan can present with her scattered site grant consultant. Also, in the new business, there'll be a B, the one, A1, has been stricken from the agenda for tonight, and we'll be adding a B. Toby will talk about foreclosure sale and budget amendment to handle foreclosure sales. If there's not any questions, we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
So who?
Second.
A motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, the next on the agenda will be citizens' comments. Okay, we've got three, let's see, five citizens' comments tonight. First, Mr. Anthony Felton.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Anthony.
The last time I was here, I gave my opinion about having a video or voice recording during closed meetings. I still say no about that. However, I'm here to share my opinion on something that was brought to my attention by a friend of mine in Virginia. I'm not any kin to him, however, he have the same last name. Before I share my opinion, I do not want my comment advertised on YouTube like everyone else's. We've already had a great camera person to my far right who does great work when it comes to video meetings. Please respect my wishes. I had a phone call from a friend of mine who keeps up with the area here. On January the 4th, when he phoned called me, he told me to check out the YouTube site about the meeting, so I did. And I guess when I mentioned about having a positive start to 2012, it didn't start out like that. And so... He was kicked off because he was, you know, voicing his opinion about what he thought about the meetings, because he keeps, you know, checking these. And, you know, he told me that... He said, "We are supposed to be adults here when it comes to meetings like this." One of the best reasons I rely on a video person as far right is that negativity is not shown during the videos. You do not hear giggling, negative remarks, childish behavior while the meeting is respectful by being videoed. As adults, we are supposed to be respectful, honest, considerate towards our fellow people here. I come from a great family who's raised by my brother and I to be respectful, honest, and considerate towards other people. You know, people for us or people, you know, sitting with us. And I feel like if there's some type of comment you wanna make, you know, if you're behind the camera, out in the audience, that's dealing with the meeting or anything, you know, you should be able to come up here and speak what's showing your mind and everything.
Thank you, Anthony. All right, next on the list is Mr. Wade Askew.
Mr. Chairman, Manager, and Board Members and Citizens of Gates County, I hope y'all all had a very Merry Christmas and wish each and every one of you a happy and successful New Year. I serve on the Ag Foundation at NC State, which works with programs with the 4H and FFA. And I have something I wanted to suggest to the Board of Commissioners. Since we have a project that is up at Merchant's Commerce Center with the landscaping, about seeing if the FFA could be involved in some of the landscaping here in the county or with that project. I've noticed that in some other states, they've started using the FFA. And the people buy the materials, the businesses or whatever, or the county, and the FFA as their project, they do the landscaping work themselves. And I think that's something that would be good for the county to look into. And even in one county, they saved the town over $100,000 just by using the FFA for their landscaping. And I think that'd be a good opportunity for the students that are involved in the FFA. And the next I want to speak about, I hope all of you get the Front Porch Living. It's a very good magazine, which is put out by the paper. And I hope sometime in the future, in the Front Porch, that Merchant's Commerce Center will be in there. And it'll be Gates County, a success story. And, you know, all this bickering that the county's had back and forth. It was sad that in the paper, a library was a hot subject for over a year. To me, that is really sad. It's one of the most valuable and the most inexpensive educational facilities any county or state or anywhere could ever put up for the citizens. And that here in Gates County has been a hot topic for well over a year. And people don't realize it, but the world is changing. Our country is changing, state, everything is changing. I wrote letters several years ago fighting the NAFTA free trade agreement. I got responses back. We held it off for four years, and then it came up again. But they were a little bit slick at this time. They threw in a few other things, and they passed it. Lot of you in here lost your jobs because of the NAFTA free trade agreement. After about three years, when those jobs started going away, businesses closed, our federal government, they actually had a heart. They realized they made a mistake. They put in a program that if you would apply for it, you could go back to school and be reeducated at their expense to go into another field of work. Are we any less than what the federal government are? Do you realize that the working force here in the United States is gonna be changing? It's not gonna, you're not gonna be sitting there on a factory putting shoe strings together or sharpening pencils. The work factory, the work factory's gonna be in our minds. It's gonna be technology. And on weekends, when you're off from work, you're not gonna be able to call your buddies over and come sit down and have a cooler full of beer and watch football games. That's gonna be the days of the past. What's gonna happen in the future is those weekends, you will be mandatory, if you keep your job, to further educate yourself into that field of technology. And that's why we have got to struggle to push ourselves. Are we gonna be left behind? The world is already passing us. We see our dollar is less than 50 cents to the dollar a night. Other countries are coming over here buying our portrait facilities that are worth billions for half the price of what we can buy them for. If we don't look after ourselves, nobody else is going to. And it's sad that an educational institution that we have got to have for our survival for the future, it's not about me, it's not about the Board of Commissioners, it's not about y'all, it's about all of us. It's about our survival as a human race, as a county, as a country. Are we gonna be not here? We will not be here. We'll be sitting somewhere else. And the Chinese or whoever, they're gonna come over here, they're just gonna, you know, we're gonna lie them to just take our country over. And that's what's gonna take place if we don't get on top of our own educational forces. I served on the Board of Commissioners. When I served on the Board of Commissioners, I didn't have the luxury of pulling funds from the fund balance. And there's some comments have been made that it's sad that we didn't have a computer for the tax office, that we had to borrow one. When I was on that, we didn't have the money to buy that computer. I took it on my own. I went to Martin County. I picked the computer up, and I brought it back to Gates County. There's been a comment made that the extra money that we have in our fund balance, it was brought on by a 5.26 tax increase. I don't remember that. If anybody can show it to me, I would like to see it. Only tax increase I remember was the year that we did a reevaluation, which our taxes was at 97 or 98 cents. We lowered it to revenue neutral, which was 63. And we went, some people in this room begged us to go just a little bit more to help our schools. And I think we decided, all of us, most of them up there, on 1 cent. We went 64 cents. Half of that, I think, went to the schools, half of it went to feed the fund balance of this county. We took on the OLF with actually no money here in the county. And thanks to the grace of God and to the citizens of OLF, we have held it off this long. I hope the county and our Board of Commissioners will keep as much money in the fund balance as they possibly can, because we never know when an emergency is gonna come up, and we're gonna need some money to hire attorneys, hire this, or hire that, or do this to fight off hurricanes, whatever we need. Please do not let our fund balance get in jeopardy again. Thank you all very much, and thank you, citizens.
Thank you, Wayne. All right, next on the agenda, Mr. Milton Carter. What do you say, guy?
I just have a couple of things.
Welcome, welcome, neighbor.
Oh, welcome. How are you doing, Mr. Charlie? How are y'all, gentlemen, today? I just had a couple of things. I wanted to find out about a pipe that y'all were supposed to replace in front of my place. I understand that the money had been allotted for it, the work hadn't started yet.
I can answer that pretty quick. The money has not been allotted for it. The drawing has been put together, but the legislature has to approve any money that'll be spent to do that. And that hasn't been done yet.
Oh, okay. I understood it was already in place for it. Okay. That was one thing. And then another thing I wanted to ask was the junk vehicle law that you have here. I'm not trying to operate a junkyard or scrap metal yard or anything like that out of my place. And I've gotten rid of a couple of vehicles that have been inside the compound. And I'm just not getting anything out of the city on this. I received a letter. They sent a letter to my landlord again. And Mr. Boone is just not reading the law right. And, you know, I'm frustrated on this. I don't know which direction to go in. So I thought I'd bring that up as well. I think that the junk vehicle law is a good thing, but I think they're picking on people a little too hard on it. So basically, I just wanted to bring that up. And, you know, maybe see if, couldn't be a little more lenient on that or a little more cooperative on that. Because I'm not bringing vehicles up there to strip them. I'm not, you know, stacking them high or nothing like that. I just, I'm not getting any satisfaction. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Earl?
I didn't have any notes tonight, but I did make one back there. It's gonna take it long. I'm not gonna talk long tonight, Graham. I appreciate last month you letting me talk. But something that happened last month, I'm gonna go back to you Commissioners. I am Earl Roundtree from Sunbury, North Carolina, and I'm tied for first place with him in talking. But last month, Johnny Hoar brought up a point about refinancing our debt. And I had never thought about that, because I've never been in a position, Jack, to refinance debt. I don't like debt. But it does, a lot of people do it, and it makes sense. Well, the, last week, I was at Passapatanck County Commissioner meeting. And, of course, I didn't say anything there. I won't in my sandbox. But I did talk with the finance officer and three of the Commissioners that I personally know. And I asked them, I said, "What about financing, refinancing debt?" And they said, "Oh, we do it all the time." And, but they did point out the fact that there was some debt that could not be refinanced due to the contract in which they did it. But they also mentioned something, Toby, that I don't understand and Sandy's not here. But one of the Commissioners, who is an accountant, said that some of the loans in Passapatanck County were like zero interest. That they got this through and by some state agency, and they got zero interest. I don't know anything about it. That's up to you, gentlemen. But I asked, has any, I didn't hear that night anything been said about it. And as a citizen and taxpayer and a person who hates debt and interest payments, I would like to ask that y'all look into this. We were here at the meeting. I think I sent the Commissioners an email on this. And I think it's something that needs to be looked into, because if we can save money, every time we save $77,000, Jack, we save a penny on our tax rate. And instead of just sitting back and ignoring it, I would like to request that when I come back to the next meeting, I'd like to see a report on this as to whether or not that we can do it or can't do it. That's all I'm asking. I would like to point out, have you got something you'd like to say about this?
Even before you made your request, the Finance Director's already started putting those numbers together and had already planned to make that report in February.
Good. We're moving. That's the only thing I wanted to hear, because I couldn't find out anything, and I was glad to hear that. Last month, one thing I want to point out, I think over the past two years, that we have gone back and greatly improved public input. And if Graham Twine would stand up there and tell you people just how many times I cuss them and the language that I use. But that's between me and Cousin Graham. That's not between y'all. But I do appreciate the opportunity. We're a small county. We've always been able to do it. It's been somewhat informal. I've been to the meetings in Passapatanck. I was in Currituck last night. And one of the differences I see, to some extent, between Currituck and Passapatanck and Gates County, and I don't know why they see, especially Currituck, was the interaction between the Commissioners and the public. And when you speak, if they got a question, they'll ask you. Or if they got a statement they're making, it was a good interaction between the people. And, of course, they had some time limits, but they did like Graham has done. You know, they didn't really stress that too much. But there's one thing that I want y'all to know. And Wade, I hadn't got the answers on this, but I have been told, and I think I'm right. I think that when we revalued, I think we did have, isn't that when we had that 5.5 tax percent increase? And I want y'all to know, from me, that Graham Twine was the only Commissioner that voted against the tax increase. And I just wanted to put that on the record. Graham Twine voted against the tax increase.
Thank you, Earl. All right, next on the agenda, Ricky Lee. What are you making about?
I'm closing. See what Peggy Lane did to me.
Hi.
Hello, Ricky.
Ricky Lee from Hall Township. I got a question, Mr. Chapel. I came into your office yesterday to talk, and I want to know why you wouldn't talk with me.
Do you want to answer this question?
Sure.
Ricky, I believe you'll remember accurately, the statement was, "I'll be glad to talk to you and be glad to meet with you. However, I will not let you record our conversation." Is that or not the accurate statement?
Somewhat. Did you have something to hide?
We're not getting in an argument here. He answered your question. Anything else?
Yes. Do you realize what happened yesterday in your building?
You gonna fill us in, or you gonna let us guess at it?
Well, there was a safety problem in your building. I had something fall on my eye. You wouldn't even talk to me.
I think that issue's been taken care of. I was here that afternoon. That had been addressed. Did you go to hospital for a doctor?
Not yet.
Okay, well, contact Phil Pitt. Pitt's under that. It's been talked to.
Is Pitt a medical doctor?
No, you talk to your doctor, then contact the attorney. That'll be fine.
Okay, well, at this time, due to the lack of me being able to get customer service, and me being able to speak to the manager or the planner, I feel it's time we done something about it. We need to bring accountability into the measure. I think we need to get rid of Mr. Chapel, and I'm firm on that.
Thank you for your opinion, Ricky.
You're welcome.
All right, I think you're the list of comments. All right. Next on our agenda, Department reports. Ms. Morgan Jeffrae?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Put it down.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Good. All right, you have before you the selection of a consultant for our 2012 Scattered Site CDBG grant. I made you some copies of both proposals that we received. The first one is from Wooton Company. The second is Coastal Innovative Adventures LLC out of Elizabeth City. And it is your choice of who you would like to choose.
Have you got any input on either one of these?
Well, my input is, although I like to cheer for the underdog, I really am firm with Wooton. They are experienced, they're knowledgeable. You saw their presentation, how well it was put together. They have 75 years of experience. And they have done these same types of projects in multiple locations in North Carolina, all across the state. In my opinion, they have a far better portfolio.
County Mayor, do you have any input? You've made any?
To me, I think we've had issues with our CDBG before, which doesn't really go into detail here. I would say using a smaller firm in a lot of situations makes sense, especially one from Elizabeth City. However, I think something as large and as complex and has the ramifications that our citizens, that our CDBG program does, I think we're better served to have someone who's a professional, who's done this before. And I would reference you to page six of the Wooton diagram. And it lists, every year since '08, they've been in multiple counties, some as close as Hertford and Washington, doing just this. Again, I would agree with Ms. Jeffrae that in most places, you'd like to root for the underdog. But in this situation, I think it's critical that we go with a professional that has the expertise of Wooton.
Commissioners, do you have any input on this before we?
Well, I was looking at this, and maybe I'm looking at it wrong. I got $10,000 versus $3,500. Is that right?
The costs are gonna be capped, and they're all gonna be paid through the CDBG. Whatever they charge is paid through CDBG's cap.
This one says not to exceed $3,500, the one you're talking about.
What page are you on?
On the last page, page 18.
Yeah, I thought that was significant. If I'm reading it right, it's $10,000 versus $3,500.
That's the way I'm reading it.
With Wooton being the one...
That they're recommending.
That you're recommending has a lower price. And with their exhaustive, really, resume, I think it's incredible.
So out of this $3,500, though, and I've been looking at these billable, hourly billable rates, did they give any kind of budgetary-type numbers as to what the matrix of mix of those hours would be compared to the $3,500?
No, sir. All I got was this submittal that you got right here.
Like I said again, I think the amount, whether they break it in hourly or how they charge you, is capped. Commissioner Jordan, I don't know if you're familiar, but I think it's $10,000 cap, I believe, for admin.
For this one, we're talking $400,000. On this particular grant, we're talking, what is it, $400,000? So we're probably talking $40,000 admin fees.
Yeah, 10%. I'm sorry.
Yeah, but there's gonna be other costs involved, once they start administering the grant. So this $3,500 is basically just an initial cost that they're talking about, putting everything together.
So what is the total cost then, versus, is this, are we talking about apples and oranges here, or what?
You're gonna have approximately, Morgan, as with Almar Commission, who's administering it now, I think it's about $40,000 admin is what it's come to.
That sounds correct.
Coming out of the grant?
Right.
The grants, paying...
So the grants can be $400,000. You have $360,000 to spend on houses, and $40,000 that are built in for administration fees.
So as far as cost to us, the administration is coming from the $100,000 grant?
$400,000 grant, yes.
Yes, it's not out of your pocket.
But, thank you, Henry.
So what's the total cost of this one versus the total cost of that one?
I'm seeing that the total cost not to exceed fee is $3,500 for Wooton and $10,000 for Coastal Innovative.
Well, I'm trying to get some perspective on that. I mean, we're sitting up here talking about the 10% deal, which, that's in addition to, right, Henry?
Well, the 10% is for administering the grant. You know, you're gonna be doing site inspections...
Right.
Taking care of client necessities as far as relocation and that sort of thing. So it's not gonna be, I don't believe it's gonna be $10,000. This is just, the $3,500 and the $10,000 that's been proposed is their proposed fee for basically outlining and getting the grant started and getting it in place. Because it's gonna be 10% of what the total value of the grant, the grant's $400,000.
And that's the normal administrative fee?
10% would be $40,000, right?
Regardless of who does it.
Right, that's how much they can charge. Now, if they only charged $3,500, that'd be great. But there's no way that they're gonna charge $3,500, because it's too much work involved in trying to administer it. You know, there's plans, there are reports, there's a lot of time that's gone into this. And I think Almar Commission went over budget with...
They actually come back for more money.
Exactly.
But what they did was they hit the cap of 40, and then came back in one of the county to pay the seven additional. So the cap is still the cap. I mean, the cap is still 10%. They're not, they can't bill for more than 10%.
Towards the grant, right.
Right. And the county, for some astronomical reason, elected to pay them additionally, then that would be the county's choice, which we've never elected to do that, I'm aware of.
So can you speak to page 18, which says not to exceed fee proposal?
I don't quite understand.
I can't.
I think that both, you know, of the proposers, I'm not sure how much thought they gave into this. Or that they are aware of what the total administrative allocation of the grant is. So, I mean, I wouldn't put any credence in any of the, either of the numbers.
Henry, are you saying that because you don't think, with the expertise they have, they wouldn't have left that much money on the table?
Well, certainly. Certainly not.
Did they leave a zero out?
I think this is a standard boilerplate proposal.
So you think somebody left a zero off of this?
I think that they... I think that they probably put a number in there and really didn't give it the proper thought that they should have given it. Even the ten thousand for this type of grant. They didn't know how much it was, one of the...
But if it's ten versus thirty-five, that brings on a very significant change here.
Well, it's like County Manager said, it really doesn't matter. If you've got forty thousand dollars, they're going to charge up to that limit. You can't go over it. The grant, if you don't use that, it's going to go back to the grantor.
Well, if, let's say that the numbers were the same. If both fees were ten thousand, I can tell you that I would still be in favor of Wooton. I would.
I would say just for tonight's purposes, if you believe that Wooton is the better company, you can select them and then we'll get the contract and deal with the actual number when it comes.
I don't want to select them, not until I know if one's ten and one's thirty-five or one's ten and one's thirty-five hundred. That's a difference.
What's the deadline on this?
Yeah, that's, well, I'm talking about thirty-five hundred, ten thousand, two thirty-five thousand.
It must be submitted by when?
March thirtieth.
March third. We'll have a meeting in two weeks. We'll make a final decision.
Get them to clarify this if you will.
There's no sense of sitting here arguing about something neither, none of us really know.
No, I think these are the better people by far than myself. But again, is it thirty-five hundred dollars or is it thirty-five thousand?
I don't care about that, no problem.
I think they need to know what the amount of the grant is. And that way, they can better determine what their administrative cost is going to be.
I'm pretty sure that Wooton knows.
I don't want to tell them that, Henry. I mean...
Morgan, bring back the break now for both.
Well, the problem is, they don't, neither of these proposals are specific about what they're going to do. They have some generic headings. There's a lot of reports. There's a lot of things that they have to do. If they don't do them, then the county's going to be in trouble. Because CDBG is going to be looking at the county for all of these reports and whatever things that needs to be submitted. So they need to be fairly thorough and they need to make sure that what they are proposing, they're going to have sufficient funds to cover that cost. Because thirty-five hundred dollars is not going to do it for this grant, I can tell you that.
No.
I agree.
Ten thousand dollars is not going to do it.
They come back last year for seven thousand dollars after they spent the forty.
Exactly.
Go ahead and bring back to the next meeting and we'll take, we'll make a decision then.
Okay. I just have one last thing, the analysis of impediments. This is just for you all to look at and review. The document is not complete, but it is a required document for CDBG. Commissioner Jordan, you've been involved with this greatly with Ms. Carol Morris. Would you like to speak on this document?
It's the analysis of impediments that we have to submit for our CDBG cap grant. And I think that it's been, it's pretty much finalized to the point where I'm comfortable with moving forward, with the board approving it to be submitted. There's a few tweaks that she's going to be doing, but she's already submitted it to CI and CI has basically okayed it. And, you know, these are just the impediments that could be perceived for housing in the county.
Is this something you need to action on for the night?
No, sir. It is just simply for you to review.
Okay.
Is this holding up the cap grant?
It possibly could.
Let's move on.
This is one thing we're supposed to approve.
If the board's satisfied with it, you can choose to vote on it tonight.
Mr. Chairman, of course, we can have more discussion on it if you want, but I would propose us moving forward with approving the report of analysis of impediments for the county. And again, these impediments are those things that could prevent or impede fair housing towards any of the citizens in the county. So...
You're making that as a motion?
Yeah, I'm making a motion.
All right. Do I have a second to accept this analysis of impediments to fair housing?
A second.
Motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like aye.
Thank you.
Just, if I could, can the board just recognize that there are going to be some minor changes that Carol Morris will make before the final is submitted? Shouldn't change anything of significance. It's mostly grammar, as I understand it.
Grammatical things.
Okay.
Just make sure, make sure the commissioners get a copy of the changes. All right, next on the agenda, Patrice Laster, without gets director. Patrice? Good evening, Patrice.
Good evening.
Patrice, good evening.
I'm here to present or to request approval to submit two grants from the Targeted Transit Assistance Program grant. And I don't know if you want me to talk about each grant individually and...
How many is two, you said?
It's two different grants.
Same program?
It's the same, they're both under the Targeted Transportation Program, but they're, one is for elderly and disabled transportation under the fifty-three-ten and one is for job access and reverse commute. So they are separate, but they're going to the same funder.
Same funder?
Mm-hmm.
I think I would be fine with talking about both at the same time.
I don't see no problem. Go ahead.
The first grant is, like I said, for elderly and disabled transportation. It's a grant that is an attempt to rectify a situation that we've had previously about transporting for major medical participants that go to dialysis or chemo when we have inclement weather or when they're holidays. That's the big portion of it, contracting that service out when we can't provide the service. And also to try to lessen the wait time for these clients. Right now, they ride on the same vehicles at the same time structure as our employment transportation, our school, as any regular client. And sometimes it's kind of difficult because it's not so much that we don't have seats, but it's a time issue. For dialysis clients, some of them have to be there, we used to get them there at six-thirty, but some of them are having to be there earlier, like six o'clock. We don't start transporting to four-thirty or five o'clock. So just recently, we've had one person that had to get off because we didn't have enough time to, we're getting him there quarter after six and they now want him to be there quarter to six. So what we're trying to do is to split it up so that we can serve them in a different way. So that's part of it. And to hire additional staff to do that. We're not requesting to hire any additional, I mean, to purchase any additional equipment, but to just have an additional van on the route so that those people will be able to be served in that manner. It would take them there on a direct commute and it would bring them straight home. Currently, we provide dialysis clients to Suffolk and to a Husky. Right now, that's all the clients that we have and they go on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. I don't know how many of the commissioners are, remember when we had the situation where we had a snow day and there was a client that she said she couldn't get anyone else to take her. Well, that's what this grant is, what we're trying to do. We're trying to be able to contract that service for another agency to provide the transportation when we can't. It is a two-year grant. It would start July one, two thousand and twelve, and it would go to June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen.
Patrice, do you have a number of how many dialysis patients you're working with?
Currently, we transport eleven dialysis patients.
Thank you.
We have, we actually have had dialysis patients in Elizabeth City and Edington, but currently, we don't. We only have people in a Husky and Suffolk at this time. It also, it would also be available for chemo clients or people that this medical service would be life-threatening not receiving it, I guess I should say. It is a, the grant is a fifty-fifty match. We would, what we would use to, for the match is the additional funds that we currently get from ROPE, the edtap funds, that we transport them under now. That money would be used to match the additional money that we're requesting to provide more services. There are also clients that are Medicaid clients that go to dialysis. We would have our regular contract with the Medicaid service. They would pay us what they usually pay us and the rest of the money that it would cost would come from that grant.
Question. I want to ask my questions as we go, so we don't want to get too much. The fifty-fifty match, just so everybody understands, and I understand, our fifty percent is actually money that's federal funds.
They're actually state funds.
State funds?
These funds we're applying to Rockland Department of Transportation, but they will take all of the programs that they choose and they will get the funds from federal. So that's why we're able to take the state monies that we currently receive for the match to receive those federal funds.
But to get, to get to the, what I'm really trying to get to, this is funds that's already in your budget anyway?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to be clear.
Yes. And they're actually clients that we are transporting. Not to say that they couldn't be additional clients, but they're clients that we're actually transporting with that money now. It's just to enhance the service so that we'll provide a more quality service for these clients.
Have you ever had these grants before? I mean, are these new grants or...
I've never had the one for the elderly and disabled before. The one, the next one that we're talking about, the job access reverse commute, we've had a grant similar to it before when we did evening transportation services. But for the elderly and disabled, we have not ever applied for it before.
Do you currently have any transportation agreements with an outside entity?
No, we don't.
Okay. Tobe, and I know we've got more to hear, but would this be an opportunity where we could use our rescue squad to do this?
I think, and I'm sure Patrice is going to get to this, that she referenced using a contract organization for days that were inclement weather or holidays. I think that's the exact organization she wants to use.
Okay, good.
Yes. The, yeah. That's really all I had to say about that one, per se. The other, well, I guess I will say this. It will, now where we have one vehicle going to a Husky and one going to Suffolk-Smithfield, then there would actually be two vehicles a day that would possibly be going there. Unless, you know, it would depend on what we needed to go. Unless it was an instance that we could meet the clients and they could get up there in a timely manner and keep going through. But the vehicle is actually to make sure that these people have a direct service. Whatever. The other grant is for job access reverse commute. And this grant is used for transportation for employment, employment readiness, daycare transportation, things of that sort too. And we want to use those funds to alleviate barriers that we have now with people not being able to get to certain jobs. One of the major barriers that we have now for people saying that they can ride on this van or that van is childcare. They can't leave at the time that the vehicles leave because they would have to leave their children home. So this service, what we're proposing, is that we would have two additional vehicles. One would come from one end of the county and one would come from the other end of the county. We would start picking up clients themselves and their children. We would meet in the middle. We would also have our existing vehicle that's transporting now that has the aid on it with children. We would meet in the middle and the clients that came from one end, if they were going to Suffolk-Smithfield, they would get on the vehicle that's going to Suffolk-Smithfield. Their children would get on the van that's going to take people to the childcare provider and the people that were from the other side that would get on the other van and do the same thing. So that's what we were requesting for that. And we're also not asking for additional vehicles, but we are asking for additional staff. We're asking for a two-part-time and one full-time driver dispatcher, which would be...
And that would be taken care of by this grant, you don't know?
It would be taken care of by the grant. It is also a fifty-fifty match. With those funds, part of the money would come from the existing grant that we have, which is ROPE. Some of it would come from the employment transportation dollars, some would come from RGP, and some would come from contracts that we contract with people now and fares that people would pay. That is also a two-year grant. It would begin July one, two thousand and twelve, and go till June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen. It would also help with clients that we have now that currently, to get to a Husky, you can't get there now until eight o'clock. So if you had treatments that you needed to get to earlier, we couldn't help you. But if we got this grant, we would be going through earlier so we could drop people off at work, we could drop them off at the hospital, wherever they needed to go earlier. And it would, we think it would lessen the time as well.
So, Patrice, how do you, and I got some information and I don't know if it's accurate or not, but how do you schedule people to arrive at their appointments? Let's say multiple people or a single individual, depending on what the route is. Let's say this came to me that a certain individual had to arrive, let's say, seven o'clock. The place opened at eight-thirty. They had to go across the road and stay at a McDonald's or something like that until this time and then they had to cross the road, an ageable person. So how do you, how do you, I guess, structure your delivery system to minimize all those kind of situations? And did that, do those kind of things occur?
Those things could happen. We tell clients, we cannot tell them what time to schedule their transportation. We do tell them what times are the best times to schedule them so that the time is less for them to wait. I think, I know the situation that you're talking about, we're going through...
Well, I don't even know if it's true, but I did get that in my...
Yeah, but we were going through to Virginia. We have to drop off the dialysis patients at a certain time and then we have to drop off the people in Smithfield by six forty-five. But this person needed to be back by seven o'clock. But we couldn't get from Smithfield. So they would either have to get off early or come, or ride through and come back. Because we wouldn't get back over there till later. So there are those times. And that's kind of what we're trying to eliminate now. If there were multiple vehicles going, then it would, because right now, in the morning, we are really doing all we can do. Not because we have, we don't have open seats, but because of the time. Because people are scattered all around the county. If we don't start till four-thirty or five and they have to arrive at six, six-thirty, and seven, you can only pick up so many people.
So are these, these places that we're actually utilizing, are they working with you to help these schedules? Any at all? Or they dictating the schedule to you, more or less? Or the people, they're dictating to you?
What we do is, when we come each year for the ROPE application, that's when we set our schedule up. We set our schedule up basically at that time, based on what we've, the requests that we've had and the services. We can't really change it for one individual. So it's for as many people as we can. So, and most of our transportation previously has been dictated by medical services. So we started off going at these times because we needed to get these dialysis patients here. It just so happened that it worked so that we could get these dialysis patients here and get these people to work at the same time. But the services were originally designed based on medical services. Because when we started off with transportation, that's all we were doing was providing medical services. And those are the services that are pretty much, in a sense, for us mandatory. So that's kind of how we, how we kind of look at it.
So if I got five dialysis patients, they all go to the same place, they're one, two, three, four, five, six, and then come back?
Yes.
Basically?
Basically.
And the medical services are trying to work with you to schedule that situation?
Yes. Now, there are, I mean, we have some that go first thing in the morning. We have some that go back over at ten, ten-thirty and then, you know, they come back in the evening. But yes, it's kind of scheduled in that manner.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
I think it's a great opportunity to provide an additional service to the citizens of the county. And I'd like to see us move forward.
All right, we'll entertain a motion to accept two grant proposals presented.
So move.
Do you have a second?
I'm sorry. We need to open a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's hold up. We rescind your motion. Okay, I need a motion to go into a public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Motion, a second, go into a public hearing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like aye. All right, we're now in a public hearing to discuss the two grant applications presented to us from the... to us from the GATES organization. Are there any public comments on these GATES, these permits? Anthony?
All I can say is, as a former customer there, I needed a wonderful job.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion, go ahead, public comment, or public hearing.
So move.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
And there are also forms up here for anybody that would build them out, who would appreciate it.
All right, gentlemen, we've got two grant applications presented to us by Patrice and the GATES organization. Do I have that motion to accept these two grant applications as presented?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Patrice. What else? So you've got another policy here, it seems.
Yes, this is just a policy update. It's for our drug and alcohol testing policy program. Through an audit that NC DOT had, there were a couple of things that needed to be added to the policy. There, let's see, there is one part on page five where I think in the paragraph where it says substance abuse professional, we had to add state and licensed marriage and family therapist as people who can provide that service.
Patrice, what you're going to tell us right now, the wording was given to you by DOT?
There is that, a skeleton policy that we're given, and we decide whether we want to do a modest, strict, or whatever. But yes, the major wording, and there's certain wording that has to be in here. There are some things that we can fluctuate, but these were things, this was a policy that we'd already approved, but these were things that the state did not put in there originally, that the federal government, FTA, said had to be in there. So we had to update those things. So that was the one thing. The second thing is, right after we did the drug and alcohol policy the last time, they came back and offered amendments to put in definitions. And from pages, let's see, from the second page to page, to page four, there's some definitions that were on the amendment that we added into the regular policy, so we won't have a policy and an amendment. So that was the thing that we added in. Okay? And the last thing was on page thirteen of twenty-five, in paragraph H, where it says applicants are required, even if not ultimately hired, to provide consent to Gates County International Transportation, to request, for us to request them to have any FTA drug and alcohol records from all previous employers. They have to report to us if they had positives previously. So that, that needed to be added in there. Something that we were already doing, it's on our application, that we request that information, but it was not in this drug and alcohol policy, and we had to add that. Those are the only changes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we approve the updated drug and alcohol testing policy that's been presented to us.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
You have a comment? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrice. All right, next on my gentleman, agenda is the new business. One thing was stricken. The next thing is the demolition permit fee. Toby, you want to touch base on that?
Sure. There was a concern raised by one of the commissioners that the condemnation committee is making recommendations to the board, and the board's ultimately approving certain houses to be condemned and destroyed. There was a concern raised by one of the commissioners that we are requiring individuals to destroy houses and also making them pay a two-hundred, or I think it's a two percent, yeah, a two percent permit cost. And there was a concern raised by one of the commissioners that the board consider waiving that permit cost.
What was that, did it say two percent of what?
Two percent of whatever the demolition cost is.
It says there at the end of the demolition permit, after the two percent, it says, is a hundred dollars?
I think in those situations where the county is implementing demolition, it's where the cost would be waived, not on all.
Correct. Yeah, this is, this was only intended to release the fee for the permit, not even the requirement for the permit. The requirement for the permit is still fully in effect. It's just simply waiving the fee for a permit to destroy a house that the county is mandating that they destroy.
Right. I think the key thing here is that whoever's going to demolish the house, that they know that they still have to have a permit and they have to comply with it. The only difference is that the two percent fee is not applicable in those condemned situations. And I think this was the concern of whoever wrote this, they felt that if you didn't charge for it, then there may be some, somewhat of a lax attitude about getting all of the required tests and so forth. I really don't see that as a problem.
I don't either. Of course, we could, you know, make a charge and have, as a deposit after the job is done, return the fee, if that would be, would be an issue. I don't know. That's, I know that's done in some things, as a deposit, make sure the job is done. But if the county's requiring them to do it, I think the county should be staying on top of getting it, make sure it's gotten done.
Right. The permit has to be signed off, so the requirements are still there.
I had no problem dropping the fee for buildings that-
So that's what we're saying, we're going to charge them a hundred dollars after we tell them to tear it down?
That's what this is saying.
I don't think that's true.
That's, that's not what we're saying, that's what we're actually doing right now.
That's what we're actually doing.
No, I don't think that's a good policy.
Well, I think that's the intent of why we're having this discussion, is to waive that.
And not only that, how do you define structure?
Well, the structure is, and what we're talking about is a structure that the county has ordered to be destroyed. I mean-
In this case, but even with that, what do you call a structure?
We're only requiring them, we're only going to take the requirement as a purchase, and if we're telling them they've got it there down.
Right, I understand that. But how do you define structure? What is it? Is it a, could be a tree?
Well, I think, and I'm-
It could be a barn or whatever, well-
Could be a barn, could be a tree.
We addressed that in the other-
I think you addressed it in the condemnation policy, it says you would not address agricultural buildings. I think you specifically stated you only address houses in regards to condemnation ordinance, which is what this discussion is pertaining to, not structures in general.
But this was in place before that, right?
This is, this is something that came from the inspection department having concerns about waiving the permit fee. And we either agree with them or we disagree with them and move forward with waiving the fee for those homes that are demolished at the county's request.
But this was written prior to the ordinance?
I don't think so.
It's not dated, it's not signed.
I believe this came from Edgar Mitchell after the board. I think you took a swipe at this a month or so ago about whether you wanted to waive the fees, and this came about after that, I believe.
So did Edgar write this after the condemnation ordinance or before?
Yes.
He wrote it after?
Well, this is actually just for information purposes.
Yeah, this is, this is-
This is not a real, a document. This is just, he's expressing-
And he said that we charging a hundred dollars, Jack?
I mean, but he's just expressing his feelings in this. This is basically a letter.
We're actually charging a hundred dollars for the fee right now. And he's expressed the opinion that we need to keep charging it. I think Henry and myself are the same, that we do not charge for this, the structure that we've ordered to be removed.
I agree with that.
I think you agree with it, too.
Yes, I do.
They still have to comply with the permit.
Right.
But as far as the charge for the permit, it's waived.
Jack, you input on that?
I see some, I see where he's talking in here about, you know, if you have, if you have a permit, we don't have another single permit that doesn't have a fee attached to it. I'm not trying to make it a money thing.
Actually, we do.
Do we?
We do issue permits for handicap ramps for-
With a waiver.
With a waiver, no fee.
And you also do it, I believe, for permits that are attained after natural disasters?
Right.
But that's the second example, when you do it?
The, the, in those situations, those, the fee exists, we're talking about a waiver in those situations.
Well, this could be, this would be a waiver, too, of a permit fee for demolition of a house that the county has ordered to be demolished. That's pretty much what I, what I understand it.
Do you want to make a motion?
Let me see if Kenny wants to talk, I know he's having a hard time down there.
I'm sort of like Johnny and Henry. I mean, if we're, we're telling them to take it down, and they got to spend X number of dollars to take it down, I think a hundred dollars, we can, we can live without that.
Now, you want to make another motion, make a motion?
I'll make that motion that we waive the permit fee for demolition of homes that the county has ordered to be demolished.
All right, we've got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. We'll get there, it takes us a while, we'll get there. The next thing on this was per-page cost for copies. The issue come up about having copies made in the county offices. Diane did some price analysis from different counties. I've talked to the county managers, and they're going to put a policy together for copies made, requested, using the numbers and bring it back to us for, for us to look at. All right, next on the agenda will be foreclosure sales report.
Okay, I'm stepping in for Renee on this one. She has gotten the one, two, three houses that are in front, the accounts that are in front of you. They are ready to record the deed and move forward. However, Travis Ellis will not move any further until he is paid. The sum is, I think, about twenty-one thousand. You have five thousand in your budget to pay for these fees, you have a budget amendment to move sixteen thousand out of fund balance to pay it. You'll get forty-five hundred or whatever you negotiate the tug of your sale for back immediately. The other part, you should get a significant portion of it once you sell the other two properties.
So we do have a potential buyer for the tug of yours?
I think you discussed it at the last meeting.
Right, and I think we wanted to wait until we approved that offer.
I think you wanted, you had to wait until you got the deed recorded.
And now we can't get the deed until we pay the lawyer fees.
Right. So that's where you're at. So I would recommend that you go ahead and approve this budget amendment, let the deeds get recorded, and then we can progress on on what Commissioner Jordan just said.
I'll make a motion, we accept the budget in a moment to move it out of fund balance into the attorney fee expense line.
Second.
All right, go, motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
That's all I have, Ms. Chairman.
Oh, we are, we will talk about, will it be another attorney anytime, or?
I'm sorry, yes. Renee and I have talked. We're not convinced that Travis Ellis is doing the best that we could get. She's contacted a few firms, she has one that she likes, and we're going to try to get them in before the February meeting to meet with her and I and see if we can move away from having a generic attorney and move more with an organization like I think we've discussed in the past that specializes in foreclosures. I think there'll be a significant cost savings and be more effective and efficient if we can move away from Travis and move into some organization that deals with this exclusively. But I'll have her possibly report to you at the February meeting and hopefully can have a meeting with the organization before then.
All right. Next on the agenda will be any other citizens' comments. I don't have any on the list, does anybody would like to debate, take a few minutes to speak? Colleen?
I just wanted to let everyone know that we have a job there at Department of Social Services on January twenty-fifth from nine AM to two PM, some open call applications. So if you have something you know, that you want to, I would encourage you to come out at four thirty, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, anything else?
Could I get Colleen to restate the time? January twenty-fifth?
January twenty-seventh. It's here nine AM or ten AM?
Be there early, right?
I would say nine AM.
Commissioner, I think there's a flyer in the admin building on the post board, if you need to direct people.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, commissioners' comments. Kenny?
Certainly, certainly like to thank everybody for coming. I've got a little bit of a cold, so I'm about ready to go home.
Thank you.
And I hope nobody else catches it.
Jack?
I'd just like to say that I know a couple of people personally who are benefiting from the dialysis transportation, and, you know, it knows, it knows no race, no creed, no color. And it's a, something that, a service that I think's really making a lot of difference because a lot of these people go over there and they're there for a long time, and they have to, when they have an opening, they have to work to that. And also, wanted to mention that because we have not given up on a dialysis treatment center for the county. It's maybe, maybe about three months ago, I think, we made another approach for that. But anyway, that's important, and when we get one of those in the county, we'll be helping everybody a great deal. So I look forward to being successful in that.
Thank you, Jack. Johnny?
Appreciate everybody coming tonight, and it's good to see you. I'm sort of like Kenny, I do have a few things to talk about. Last month, we were talking about our fund balance and, and you saw what was going on, and obviously, you've been reading the paper, and you see that our fund balance is how it's been growing over the last three years, and prior to that, it did take a little dip. But prior to that, there was a reason that it did. I was reluctant last month, Colleen's comments, because obviously, I'm concerned about revenue streams, too, but even then, it didn't seem quite right, and I had a discussion with Colleen and kind of enlightened her about a few things, and I think we come to an agreement that what we're talking about would not impact county revenue streams whatsoever. What happens is, Internal Revenue Service, anytime you have a capital asset, they tell you how many years that you can depreciate that asset. Now, you depreciate assets regardless of whether you pay cash for them or you pay for them on time. That current building, and you have different year schedules depending on one of the macro system of where you, it fits into. Buildings anywhere twenty-seven, thirty-nine years. That building's thirty-nine years, at least, right, Colleen? So that expense line will actually show up on the, on the expense for thirty-nine years, regardless of whether you pay for it in five, ten, fifteen. So it has no impact whatsoever. So now we go back to looking at the numbers of how much money that we can save you, the taxpayers. So there's only two ways to go about this. I'm not going to continually step behind here and be aware of what is happening to the tax dollars as they continue to move up, as you saw the fund balance grow, grow, grow. It's your tax dollars. So if I've got them, I'm going to do something with them, positive. And you saw the chart, there are half a million dollars, saves almost seven hundred thousand dollars. Mr. Bazemore came up with another thing, to put in amortization schedule, over a million dollars saved by refinancing. The ones I was presenting, you did not have to refinance, you didn't have to do anything but make the payments. Kenny even alluded to the fact that he made extra payments on his mortgages, he was paying those. I did likewise. It's smart business. I'm about saving money, and it's a good thing to do. You got to remember, the tax rate's still where it is, and will continue to grow if we continue to monitor our expenses, and Toby has done a good job on that. He's held people pretty tight. But we've done some very unwise things on the other side of the spectrum, extremely unwise, and it's time to do something about them. And it's time to do something about them. So if we continue with sixty-four cent tax rate, we need to start being, doing something with that money to help you, the citizen. Just like Mr. Bazemore just, was talking about our courthouse project prior to this meeting here. If you don't do something, you, the taxpayer had to step to the plate. Well, you had to be conservative, you had to save money. And this is the way you do it. You want to improve your debt to equity ratio. Corporate America does that all the time. If you had a person that had ten million dollars and he had seven million dollars of, or nine million dollars worth of debt, his net worth is a million dollars. And you had another guy that came to you that had a million dollars and zero debt, which one of those people would you trust the most? Would you trust the guy that's got ten million in his pocket and knows none? Or would you trust the guy that's got one million and don't owe anybody? Who would you trust? Well, I can tell you who I would, so. Toby, when did you say you're gonna have, Sandy's gonna finish that? All right, well, I'm looking at half a million dollars to save seven hundred thousand dollars. And if we go to right to Mr. Bazemore said and we could try to do that, then we can save a million dollars. A million dollars is important to me and I hope it's important to you. And so, this is my game, I know this game, I've played it many times. I also know about NAFTA and I know what the North American Free Trade Agreement was about. The problem that happened with NAFTA, and it's a good thing, free trade, but the problem is, is the people in Washington DC were not protecting the American worker. They, they allow manufacturing plants across this country with sorbanes oxley. I'm an accountant, I know about that one. In international paper, we had to hire sixteen thousand people just to fulfill that regulation because Enron was a bad dealer. And you think these people were making ten dollars an hour? No, they weren't, that's what we had to do. EPA regulations, just ungodly regulations that we have across this country. And the problem is this, and that's a good thing, they are good things, all of them are. But the problem is, we let the guy in China, South America, go produce the same products. And he don't have all those regulations and guess what he does? He can bring them on your shore and sell them less than you can. And it's not about the labor, people think it's about the labor, but it's not. It's because of the bureaucracy that our government puts upon the small businessman and the large one too. If you were a baseball player and you had a manager sitting out there and he told you that he wanted you to hit home runs, he came and gave me a thirty-six inch bat and he gave Jack a twenty-four inch bat, who do you think has the most likelihood of hitting home runs? Anybody want to guess? Me. Well, that's the handicap that we are being placed upon us here in the United States. And it's killing us. And it's because bureaucrats don't understand what's going on with the manufacturing part that we got to have in this country. This country was built off of manufacturing. People couldn't have a job like I had, all of them. You can't have a bunch of guys sitting behind the desk pushing pencils, you got to have people making things. I was smart enough to realize that the people working in the plant were more important than I was because if they weren't there, I wasn't gonna be there. And it happened. So that's what we got to do. And it's important as us sitting behind this desk to do something with the revenue stream that we have. Now, we don't need to do what they did in Chawan County, I'm not advocating that by any means. But I'm not gonna keep it in my pocket on this side of the fence and not give you the benefit of it. So that's what this is about and next month, I'm ready to go. We need to take a proactive approach and save the citizens of this county some money and do good things. And we can continue to monitor that and when we're setting on two point six million dollars of county money, cash that you can spend above the state and take five hundred out of it and put you back to where you were three years ago. And that ain't all, we're, we're making money this year too. Now, I don't know, I, I plot the revenue stream and the expenditure stream, I've been doing that for about six years, watching it closely. I haven't dug into the details, I get those from Sandy and look at them. I look at vendors and who we're spending money with, but I don't come up here and get the invoice. But it's important, extremely important. It's your money and as I said, I'm not gonna spend it any different than I would spend my own and you can bank it. So I'm looking for proactive things out of you, the citizens, to charge these guys with being smart and wise with your dollars. And I really appreciate you being here, thank you.
Thank you, Johnny. Henry, you got something?
Yes, I'm glad to see everyone out tonight and I'm just gonna take a little bit different approach. I think we've been doing some good things for the county. Nothing happens overnight, it takes time. I want to commend the county manager and Hedgepath. Timmy, for correcting the water leak at Sunbury. I know the citizens of Sunbury really appreciate that. I think the Kim O's project is moving along well. I really look forward to some of the new businesses and positive things that's gonna happen as a result of that project. I'm very proud of the sale of the Sunbury School. And I look forward to what's gonna happen there. And also look forward to the report that the county manager and the finance director are working on to present to the Commissioners about refinancing. So I think we're moving forward and citizens bear with us and you'll see that, that things are happening to bring about a better quality of life for the citizens in this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. I've got a couple of things here and comments. First thing, we got a application for funding from the EIC, was pre, presented to us. It was supposed to be presented thirty days before they needed it, it didn't get here until today. So we're accepting it, it'll be, their deadline will be something they'll have to deal with. We, we have accepted it, it's been presented. The other thing is tomorrow at one o'clock, the bids for the sewer system will be, be opened for the, the new sewer down in the eastern crossroads area. The contractors will be here opening bids, so at one o'clock tomorrow, the bid opening will happen here in the Commissioners' room, I believe. Other than that, welcome everybody here, thank y'all for coming, y'all have a good night, safe trip home.
I got one question, Graham.
Yes, sir.
And I didn't know anything about this, I did look in the paper this, yesterday and it said that, talking about the library, the biz, that it's seven thousand two hundred and seventy feet. I thought it was eighty-one hundred.
No, we, we, we were at seventy-two, we, we at seventy thousand two hundred, that's what the final, um, numbers were, I believe is right. What the drawings come up with. The engineers, we started, the eighty-two was where we started it, but they scaled it down to seventy, seventy-two, somewhere where we, where we required them to do so.
So the seventy-two seventy was at one point five million?
Well, I'm not sure where the bud, the one point five is the budget, we don't know where it's gonna come in at until we get the bids tomorrow.
So is the one point five on eighty-one hundred or seventy-two seventy?
Seventy-two, I believe.
You won't know, like we said earlier, you will not know until the bids are open on the thirty-first.
The budget number was for.
I understand that, was the budget number at one five based on eighty-one or seven, two, seventy?
Seventy-two.
It was based on seventy-two seventy.
I think that's right. And that, remember, that is a budget number, not a final number until the bids come in tomorrow. Thank y'all for being here. We need a motion to adjourn.
So move, second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All, all opposed, like sign, all aboard, yeah.